Good evening, one and all. Those in the back room, it's about time that we start, it's 6:30. Welcome, one and all, my guest in the audience, as well as county fellow county board members. I would like a roll call, please.
Ingram. McGuire. Patterson. Rector.
Here.
Store.
Here.
Summers.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Thorzlin. Tinsley.
Present.
Wolken.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Clemmons.
Here.
Clifford. Coer. Dillard Myers. Eisenman.
Here.
Esri.
Here.
Portato. Goss. Harper.
Here.
Rosales.
Here. Thank you, Megan. Uh, seek approval of the agenda and addenda.
So moved.
Moved by Charles, could I get a second? Second by Connie. Uh, any comments, corrections, deletions? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, agenda is approved. Seek approval of the minutes of December 12th, 2019. Moved by John Rector.
There's, I, there's a correction that needs to be made.
What was that?
There's a correction that needs to be made. Oh, I'm sorry, second and first, okay.
A correction where, I'm sorry? Uh, second, okay, moved by John, second by Stan Harper. Uh, Jody.
On page one, it says that I was absent and present at the meeting. I was absent.
Could we, could we take that note, Megan, and make that correction for the, our next meeting? Okay, you couldn't be two places at one time. Great, are there any more corrections for the addendum of December 12th? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, public participation, we have my old friend from W E F T, Ed Mandel. Take your time, you amongst friends.
Sorry, so I wanted to ask about the treasure situation and it's a situation I don't, I don't understand. So, um, it's my understanding, if, 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 how, how was, if she couldn't keep up with her, she had to submit monthly reports. And if she wasn't submitting monthly reports, for treasury reports from the very beginning, why didn't the board, you know, and they had, why didn't the board demand that she do something, you know, find out, find out if she needed assistance? And how can the auditor do his job without properly update numbers? And how can the, how can the board do its job and submit budget, do the, do the budget information, well, update numbers also? And I just don't understand, um, the, the basic thing. And, and she said in her resignation that she wanted to keep the seat in Democrat Party hands. If that's what she wanted to do, but if she, if she wasn't able to do the job, why didn't she resign earlier? And the Democrat, then the seat would still be in Democrat hands, but she would, why, they would, you'd find somebody else who was able, who would be able to do the job more effectively than she did. And I just don't understand, um, that basic thing.
Thank you for your comments, and I will consider that, uh, Ed. Are there any other individuals that would like to speak at this time? Okay, let me close public participation, any communication from the board? John?
Yeah, I just want to let everybody know, I attend the monthly subcommittee to end veterans homelessness, uh, meeting every month, it's at the Salvation Army, and between what they do and representatives from Land of Lincoln, Legal Assistance, and the VA, it's, it's kind of one of those committees behind the scenes, it's really impressive. There's, there's, I think, our last meeting, there's like six or seven identified veterans that are homeless, and they work really hard with these people, have some phenomenal programs. So, I just want to make sure people know that there's entities out there that are doing a great job for Champaign County. Thank you.
Thank you for that information, John. Are there any board comments? Charles. Dr. Young.
So, at first, I wasn't going to say anything, but I might as well say something, because I do believe in the power of prayer. So, um, I don't know if you got noticed, um, last week, early last week, it was a real bad accident on 74, I think it was East 74, in Cunningham. And it caused the, um, the, uh, the tragedy, um, um, the, the life of my two nephews who passed away. So, one of them was in their, um, late 30s, the other one was in the mid 40s. And the, um, I don't know, driver, passenger, that story is still being, um, cleared out. Um, I went to the hospital, they here in pretty bad shape, so he's working on his fourth, um, surgery. So I had three nephews, all of them young, related. So, if you believe in the power of prayer, continue to pray for me and my family, and the funeral will be Saturday. We're going to have a double funeral at Stone Creek, because we have a very large family and they, and in-laws, everybody is very, very large. So just pray, if you believe in prayer or not, I don't know, good luck or something, thank you very much.
Thank you for that update, Charles, and our prayers and condolences are with you and your family both. Well, you're up next, Doctor Young, policy personnel and appointments.
My wife keep telling me, get glasses, get glasses, that's bad, isn't it? So where I'm at, alrighty, um, A, County Executive, number one, monthly HR report, December 2019 has been accepted, placed on file. Number two, recommendation to the Finance Committee for approval of the creation of a new position titled Structural Engineer, and classification of the new position and grade range L. I get now, John first, second? Who said, you second? Alright, make sure you get these names, John first, Clemmons second, any discussion? Discussion, okay, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nay? Motion pass. Okay, uh, appointment, reappointment, um, I just, let me see, list of appointment expiration in 2020, that's information only, so I'm going to B, to the Plainfield Public Water District applicant Carl Withers, who is appointed to a term 1/23/2020, that's on the orange sheet. 1/23/2020 to 5/31/2020. Can I get a motion? Second motion? Okay, okay, any discussion? Discussion, I still don't know this person, but I think I'm going to go along with it anyhow, until I start reaching out to the person, myself, I guess. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nay? Motion passed. Where we at, okay, so B, County Clerk, one, December 2019, report has been accepted, placed on file. Two, semi-final report, July, December 2019, has been accepted, placed on file. And number three, resolution approving change of hours for the Champaign County Clerk office, can I get a motion? Leah Taylor first, second, motion, Summers, any discussions?
Could we, could we have Clark Ammons come to the desk, so we could ask some questions, please?
Yeah, while, um, Ammons come up front, let me at least say that, um, I do have the ruling right here that, um, Darlene printed off for me. So basically, my understanding of it is, um, and it was, this ruling dates back to 1972, that, um, the, the county office must be open during these times set by the county board back in 1972. So before you get started, Aaron, for the people who watch, I'm just going to read it off. I think I can read. So this is, like I said, resolution, um, ordinance in 1972, which I think need to be updated. Resolution creating uniform office hour, whereas all Champaign County administrative offices are public office, open for the convenience of the general public, and whereas the Champaign County Board Supervisor established uniform office hours by resolution on March 7th, 1972. And whereas the majority of the Champaign County employees, the majority of the Champaign County employees within the courthouse have submitted in petition requesting the Champaign County Board to change the uniform hours of operating and closing for daily businesses. And whereas there is a need to make the hours of public and closing uniform among all county administrator offices. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Champaign County Board that all Champaign County Administrator offices shall open no later than 8:00 a.m. and shall close no earlier than 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Be it further resolved that these hours shall not apply to any date on which the offices are authorized to be closed. Be it further resolved that this revolus shall be affected Monday, June 19th, 1972, presented, adopted, approved, and recorded this 12th day of June in 1972. That would have made me five years old. I don't know who the county chairperson was, alright, go ahead, sorry.
So, good evening, I'm here to answer any particular questions that you might have.
So, am I reading this, that you've done this before, and you did this on January 8th, that you did close the office?
Was it January 8th? I don't know if it was January 8th, I don't have the dates in front of me, but if you're asking about the hourly meeting, the hour meeting that we have on a monthly basis, that's actually been going on for about four or five months now. So where I have a, uh, just, actually just become fully staffed, um, and as many of you may be aware of, I have, uh, probably the most diverse staff in the entire county. And so which requires for us to discuss some things, we have a lot of different perspectives. We able to do training, uh, diversity training, we able to do, we had a, we spent an extensive, um, hour, pretty in-depth hour, I should say, discussing the current policy changes for, uh, sexual harassment, as well as the cannabis policy. Uh, so of course, you all know that as department heads, uh, when the office opens, we don't have an opportunity to just break and meet with the staff to discuss various different issues and things like that, so we have to find the time to do that. As I was searching for that, it actually, the idea was brought forth because, uh, it is my understanding that Ms. Blakeman does the same thing, and has been doing it for years. So it's, it was pretty, uh, shocking to me that this would become an issue when Katie's been doing it for years.
So, Mrs. Blakeman isn't here, I have a resolution in front of me. My, I guess my question is, you're saying you did not understand the statute, and that you should not have closed the office?
No, that's what you said, I didn't say that.
So you, you're telling me, to the best of your knowledge, you thought it was okay to close the office?
No, that's, if you want me to answer a question, you can ask me a question, I'll answer it, but I'm not going to confirm your interpretation of what I'm saying.
You could tell me your interpretation, did you close the office, and you did not have the authority to close the office? Because you did not have county board approval, my, simple question, sir.
So, no, I did not have county board approval to close the office, uh, for any of those dates.
Thank you, and because Ms. Blakeman did it, has nothing to do with your resolution here. If I drove from northwest Champaign County to come take care of business, and your office, and you're taking, supposed to take care of the constituents, you have other times you can do meetings. I know other staff people have their meetings during the time, but you're mandated by the statutes to keep it open. I understand you need training, I understand you need things, but it's totally wrong of you to, A, do it to begin with, and then B, now you want to continue to do it. I will not support this, it's wrong, it's totally wrong.
Anybody else? Doctor Store.
Mr. Ammons, have you had complaints regarding the closure?
None.
People unable, unable to, uh, accomplish business?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I had a little difficulty on this one, because we could be opening up Pandora's Box, that if we allow other directors to do the same thing, and their meetings go on an hour and a half, and their training goes on for two hours, and then we're going to have this stagnant closing of offices, and like John had indicated, people are going to be coming from out of town, not knowing, because I don't think that the treasurer's office, that was also closed prior to Thanksgiving, was any announcement, 48 hours ahead of time, that they were going to be closed. We got complaints back saying that, that office had been closed, and why was it done? So I made a mention to Darlene on that, and I believe that she forwarded to your office, as well as to the clerk's office, as well as to the treasurer's office, the business hours for operation for the, for the Brookings Building, and for all county offices. So I cannot support going out of the norm after, what, almost 40 years of having the same hours of, you know, of operation? I cannot support this, this, uh, resolution, uh, the way it's written. Because we will have to allow that excuse for other offices as well.
Well, I think that that's the point, that, um, so there's a couple of things here. We have definitely notified the public, uh, well in advance of 48 hours, whenever we close the office, uh, for those particular trainings. So, just to make sure that I'm, I'm crystal clear about that, we've, we've done a tremendous job, I think through social media, emails, and, uh, notifications, that the office would be closed during that time period. And, uh, I don't have a problem, it is not my intention in any way, shape, or form to usurp, uh, the authority of the county board, or to undermine your authority. What I'm asking for is, uh, I think reasonable, in the sense that we're talking about one hour out of the entire month, and what we're able to accomplish. My staff asked for this, they were looking for an opportunity, because they were not having these types of meetings. So, uh, they receive, we received lots of positive feedback from them, extremely important to the office. We only had three people who stayed in that stat, in that office, so I have a lot of new people. So being able to talk to them and give them the training that they need is essential to us actually doing the service, and doing the business of the county. So we're trying to take advantage of that, because we don't have other opportunities unless we pay overtime, right? So, at some point during the day, if I don't close the office, I'm going to have to have three hours worth of meetings to share with the three divisions in my office, what's going on, what these changes are, so that they are fully abreast of what's happening. So, being that this has been happening for years, in another countywide office, I find it rather ironic that now that I start doing it, then it becomes an issue. So I, I, I'm, I'm trying to stop short of what's making me think why this is becoming an issue for me.
Well, you can tell us why you, why you think that, if I.
Hold on, hold on. Wait, John, please, thank you, Aaron has the floor, thank you.
So, that's all I had to say.
Okay, then Stephanie next.
I would like to request, so I, I don't know that, I've seen two different statutes in relationship to this, I've seen that one that was red, and then I've also seen cited some sort of state statute. And, um, so, my question is, I believe our Veterans Affairs Office isn't open on Fridays. I believe our Sheriff's Office opens at 8:30, not at 8 o'clock. So my question is, I guess what I would like from staff is all of the offices in a chart, when they open, what their policies are in terms of closing the office for holidays and staff purposes. And if they have divergent, um, standards, when did the board approve of all of those? And if the board didn't approve of all of those, then I would agree with Clerk Ammons, that this seems arbitrary and capricious against one elected official. Um, if we're going to do this, we should have, it, to your point, Mr. Rosales, um, my guess is that Pandora's Box is already open, and, um, I find all of this a bit.
We're going to go Kyle, then Jody, then Aaron, then, um, Rosales.
I think somebody had raised their hand here.
That was Kyle.
Yeah, I'll give him an opportunity to speak.
You're chairing right now, right?
Yes.
Okay. Was it your idea to bring this to us, that you said you've been doing this a while, or is this brought, was this?
So, interestingly enough, um, after, uh, I don't know, there was a communication between, uh, the county executive, and so when the statute was brought to my attention, I said, oh, okay, well, I'll send it to the, the board. Cause I'm not trying to hide anything, or to, like I said, undermine your authority or anything like that, so it was brought to my attention through the statute that, uh, it was supposed to stay open, to, actually, we're supposed to open at 8:00 and close at 5:00 p.m., according to the statute that was, uh, brought to me. And so when I asked the county executive about it, she said that there was an ordinance that was changed, or that was brought into being, um, several years ago, many years ago, that's changed the work week to a 37 and a half hour work week, uh, so that's why we close at 4:30 instead of a 5:00 p.m. So I thought that was in, I mean, that's basically in, in violation of the statute, because the statute says you close at 5:00. So, I, anyway, that's how it came to me, so I said, okay, well, I'll bring it to the board, and make sure that the board is aware of what's happening. I didn't think it was a big deal, because of what we need to do, and the training that, uh, all of the offices need. So I'm, that's how it came to me.
Okay, uh, yeah, I, I would just like to make sure that we show the same level of scrutiny to every office. Um, I, one hour a month, I think is a very small window. Being able to have a full staff meeting is something that's very important, and I think that, uh, most jobs are able to afford that. So to say that a job like this shouldn't be able to have that same, uh, ability, uh, is just unreasonable, and, um, really, there's no consequence, so if people are going to be political tonight, um, I, I encourage you to keep having those staff meetings.
Well, one of the things that, um, I did ask, because we have several countywide offices, I thought that if there was going to be an analysis of this process, or if there was a concern, then everyone, uh, whatever statute that governed all of the countywide offices would have been discussed by the board, and then you would call us all in here and say, hey, this is the decision that we want to make, or we want you all to explain what's happening. So, I'm just a little thrown back, a thrown off a bit, especially when, I mean, the Office of Veteran Affairs doesn't even open on Fridays. I know you just spoke about the veterans, do you have a particular concern about that, Mr. Rector? Oh, but he's. But, so you're fine if he's not open doing business on Fridays? Is that what you're saying? How did they learn those hours?
I promise you, somebody up in Penfield might not even be on the internet to know that you closed on Facebook. So if the floor is back to me, did you close any other hours prior to Christmas Eve?
No, prior to Christmas Eve?
Did you, did you close any additional hours that you did not seek approval for, that were not county holidays?
No.
You didn't close early Christmas Eve, or any of those days?
Oh, oh, on the 23rd, yes, those four hours before Christmas, before Christmas.
Is that an official county holiday?
No, it is not, you are correct, I did close for four hours on that day as well.
Okay, Jody next? Jody, Geraldo, then Steve, remember the order.
I totally get that you need training, um, and I would just say, and I, Miss, I don't, I'm going to say her name wrong, so Katie. I don't, I've never went to her office, and so I'm just concerned, because I'm not on Facebook, or Twitter, or any of it. Because there was one day after I dropped the kids off at school, I rushed here to pay my, my property taxes, and so I would be concerned, that this is, it's only me, twice a year that it would bother me, but, um, and so if I came here directly after school, that's around the 8:30 hour. And so that would be my concern, is the people that, I guess you serve a bigger community, whereas maybe the veterans, they specifically could just address letting no, veterans know, you wouldn't have to let me know. And so I just, I guess I would ask that, if this goes through, and I just am wondering, could you do it before 8 o'clock? And then we get into the sticky situation of now they've worked an hour over, right?
Yeah, so, I was trying not to impose overtime costs onto the county, because the, the meetings.
Yeah, we don't want that either.
No, so, I, I thought this was a reasonable thing, we looked at our hours, uh, uh, Ms. Eisenman, we, we looked at our hours and saw when we were the busiest. And that opening hour, that 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. is the slowest period for us. So we decided, I decided, that that was going to be the best time, uh, for us to do that. And it was nothing malicious, uh, about this, like I said, I got the idea from Katie.
Oh, I'm certainly not being, I'm just, and I, so I would just suggest to you, to people like myself, who are, you would think would be on all of the, um, whatever, those, all of the technology things that I'm not, so maybe if you could put it in each, like, individual paper, like, the Muhammad Citizen, like, to make sure that it's getting to the senior citizens, like, I'm, I mean, don't just rely on that to be your only, social media, to be your only source of reaching out, to letting everybody know. Cause I really didn't know, it wouldn't affect me, because I wasn't coming to your office, but you know, I didn't know, I wouldn't even know about it in these dates. Now I will note them myself, for paying property taxes, but otherwise, so I'm just saying maybe something other than social media.
I'm completely open to that, uh, we are trying our best to make sure we serve the citizens of Champaign County at a high level. So, the training is something that's extremely important, we have cybersecurity issues, uh, phishing, uh, emails and things like that, that lead to, uh, hacking, and it leads to viruses. We're just trying to do everything that we can to make sure that we are, uh, people are abreast of the, the new policy changes. Uh, we don't, uh, the staff members, the union members, don't have the opportunity to just call a department head meeting, and come in here and sit for an hour and a half, and, and pontificate, or work on the different things that we need to, to work on. So I have to find ways to make that happen, all the department heads have to do that. So, this was just an opportunity for us to try to do, to do just that, and try to make things work, uh, in the best, uh, interests of other people of Champaign County. So, uh, I, I don't know what else to say about it, I don't think it's, um, a fair, uh, assessment here for, for me to be the only countywide who's sitting here having this conversation.
Who's next? I said the order.
Yeah, I already spoke.
Okay, so Stan and James, okay, I thought, okay.
Oh, do you want to go, Steve, Steve, go ahead.
You got to make sure you keep the order, I'm getting mixed up.
Well, I concur with, uh, Member Fortato's request, that staff put together a ma, a matrix of when various county offices are open. I do believe that it's the prerogative of the county board to work with officials in establishing standard hours. But, in the last 10 minutes, we've heard that there are at least five countywide offices that have variations in their starting and closing time. So, I also am not inclined to single out one of the five. The, the Pandora's Box is, Geraldo, actually, it's, it's pretty open right now, it appears. But again, I think it is a board prerogative, and we need to look at it, and come to a uniform decision that makes sense. Accordingly, as I said, I'm not prepared to single out the clerk's office, and I will be supporting this resolution.
You know, I would certainly say that, um, we, we are definitely willing to stay committed to the timeframe. So when you talked about be going an hour and a half, and, no, that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't happen. So I'm certainly happy to, to reach out to other different, uh, means of communication, to make sure people, it's a broad range of people are getting the information, and certainly willing to stick to a very strict understanding about it being for one hour, or 45 minutes, or whatever it, it needs to be.
James Tinsley, then Stan.
Thank you, Doctor Young, um, so yes, I mean, I, I can see this being an issue, if you were asking maybe from like 3:30 to 4:30, to where like, if somebody tried to come in at the last minute, maybe if they got off work, then they would miss you possibly for the rest of the weekend, or, or something like that, or just for the rest of the business day. But, worst case scenario, with you having this meeting from 8:00 to 9:00, they would just have to take care of their business at 9:00, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, so it's not, I mean, if somebody drove two and a half, some hours throughout the state, or wherever, to get here to see you, another hour probably wouldn't do too much damage to a birth certificate, death certificate, property taxes.
Listen, and, and even in that situation, uh, Board Member Tinsley, I would understand that there was still a level of inconvenience for, for this taxpayer. So that's not my objective, um, but, so I'm, I'm more inclined to certainly do what Ms. Eisenman has suggested, is to reach out to a broader array of people, to make sure that everyone's getting the message, so that they'll know what's going on. And, uh, even if someone contacted me and said, listen, I'm going out of town, uh, on this date that you've got coming up, I need to come in at 8:15, then we're going to accommodate that person. I'm, I'm not here to make it more difficult for folks, I'm just trying to do what I need to do to support my staff, and also serve the people. That's all I'm trying to do.
Stan, then Steve. Did you go, Steve? Okay, Stan.
Oh, okay, um, I'm going to go along with, uh, Mr. Summers there, and what Ms. Fortato said, uh, uh, let's get all the department heads together. See if, I'm sure, like Jody just said, everybody needs training, everything changes from year to year, programs change, whatever. I think this is probably something when Mr. Young was reading the resolution from 1972, maybe that, maybe that needs to be updated also. I mean, I hate to tell you, Charles, you said you were five in 1972.
Yeah.
I was in high school, so I'm old.
Alright, pops.
But anyway, I, I, and as Kyle said, this is something, I understand the need for training, uh, let's do it, let's make it uniform, make the department heads what day they think they need their training on. Be consistent on what day you're going to do it, so the public knows that, uh, and as Kyle said. And as Kyle said, this is not that big a deal to make a political issue out of it. Thank you.
I, I would like to say you do a heck of a job on your social media. Because, I mean, I, I watch that and I do see when the office is closing those hours. I'm fortunate enough, I am on social media, but my grandmother's not, my, you know, the older generation's not. And that's what concerns me more than anything. I really don't see a problem with you having a meeting. We just need to make sure that the older generation, the not-so-technologically savvy people, Jody, that, that's not going to see that on social media.
Okay.
Oh, and, and Mr. Harper.
And, and we, and I appreciate that. So I'm, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm writing down a couple of different things that we might be able to do to expand our reach, to make sure folks are, are getting it. We do public notices. So we, it's not just the social media. It is also public notices so that, so that we are having a wider reach. But I've been a person over the years that have always asked for, you know, a wider reach, especially when you say, okay, it's in the news gazette, where there's a bunch of people who don't read the news gazette. So I'm open to that. And we have been very consistent about the time and which day of the week that we're doing it. So it's always the same, it's been the same every month. We didn't, we're not changing it. It's not fluctuating all over the place.
Any more discussion? Oh, Lorraine, Ms. Coward, Lorraine.
I'd like to see us change that resolution that you, you read. Sort of be some clarification and get in touch with the other department heads so that everybody can be on the same page. I don't have nothing against people giving training because I know that most, all department people in there need training from the beginning of, of their employment until the end of employment because things change. So I'm willing to make a motion that we get the policy changed so that we can all be above the law in a way, you know, we, you know, when I, here to go.
What's that? Okay. Not just yet. We're in discussion mode. I'm learning.
And, and next time, you know, like I'm with Aaron, he shouldn't be the only one up there. Everybody that was involved in, in this training without permission from the board should be a part of it. So that's my motion is to contact the other department heads once we get, get this here resolution rewrote so they can address this.
Any more discussion? Geraldo, Chair Geraldo, then Stan.
Stan, go ahead.
I'd make this short. I see Jeff back there with Highway. Now, you guys, a lot like during the summer, start at six-thirty in the morning. When would, I mean, I'm sure you guys have meetings to say where we're going. I mean, would this affect your department or?
We're never fully closed.
That's true. You just get road commissioners coming in complaining?
We answer phones from six o'clock in the morning till four thirty.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, for me, it's just the point of clarification. You were not flagged, Aaron. It was the treasurer's office that was flagged. There were complaints that came in. Nobody ever complained about your office. Nobody ever complained about Blake's office. So we never knew, I never knew that there were different office times. But if we're going to write something and then you came up with this proposal, and I said, well, wait a minute, let's give everybody an opportunity to participate and do a standard opening hours and closing hours because the audience or the population out there already has it in their mind when the office is open, regardless of the post or not, other than if it's, you know, day before Christmas or the holidays. But I think that we have to inform the public as to any new changes and we ought to do it once and for all, for all offices, not just for your offices. So that's why I couldn't support this one the way it's written because we have to do it and maybe, you know, meet in the department heads meeting that Darlene has and discuss opening hours and institute days and, you know, trainings that, that do occur. They may not only be restricted to one hour. That's what I'm saying. But nobody was picking on you, believe me. I was just saying, let's put the brakes on it. Let's think about it logically and then let's address it. Maybe address it at the policy level where the ordinance, resolutions needs to be rewritten and modernized to our day society today. And then, you know, use social media or use many of the medias that we have today to advertise what the new office hours are to these new departments. That's all I had to say.
Anybody else? Any more discussion? Well, let me say this real quick, Aaron. I talked to you briefly on the telephone, which was a good conversation, and I had mixed feelings about it. However, I am open to revising not only the, the policy, the ordinance in this area, but a whole lot throughout the whole county. The county government, to me, is really jacked up. That's why I continue this. I think all of it needs to be modernized to today's society, to a twenty-first century more model in regards to how we function, how we live. Because rules and policy only written according to reflection, how we live and how we function in time, has changed. So my last question is, do you know, I'm just curious, I wrote down, what was the past practice of Gordy? How, how did he have meetings? Anybody tell you? How did that work? I'm just curious.
According to the staff who had stayed back and even before some of them left, they didn't have meetings. That's why they were, they were asking for these types of meetings so that we would have everybody on the same page.
Okay, Tinsley.
One last question. I don't know whether you have or haven't had your meeting for a month. I'm not going to ask you. But would it, I mean, like, do you need this now? Could we possibly table this into the next call to get all the other countywide offices together?
So we do have a, we've already had our meeting for, for January. So, but certainly coming up for February and moving forward, that's the expectation of the staff. I would hope it could get resolved before then because we feel like we've been putting out a consistent message and people are making the adjustment to the time. So if it changes again, or if we have to wait and it goes back to being open on that one day, it's just, I would rather just be consistent. So if we can get this taken care of and get it resolved before then, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, any more discussion? Once, twice? Okay. Time to vote. Thank you, Aaron. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nay?
Nay.
Wait a minute. So what's going on? Do, do we do a roll call or what? Show of hands? All right. Oh, yeah, okay. I thought you said, go ahead.
So if you want to pass the motion tonight for this particular thing, you would vote yes. If you want to send it back to the committee to be revised for the whole county or other information, then you would vote no.
So do we do it? Stephanie, then James.
Or we could vote yes, and there could be another resolution at the next one.
Alternative is you could vote yes, that you're approving this particular thing, but you could then offer some other motion at another time, either tonight or later.
Okay, so what we can do, can we do, because I got confused with that, can we raise our hand? All in favor by saying, by raising your hand in favor of this resolution. Who doing the count? Somebody count. Is that it? Okay, so it passed. Oh, all, oh, so all the no's, all the nays, raise your hand. Sorry, all the nays, sorry. See, I told you I'm learning. Okay, it passed. Thank you. Where we at next? Number four, resolution authorizing general primary election judge numbers. Can I get a motion? Leah first, second motion. Dr. Storey, any discussion? May want to wait here. Any discussion? Yeah, Clement. Clement, all right, got you.
Sure. I just, I just have a couple of quick, quick, quick questions for you. First of all, do you have an idea of where you're going to cut these judges from?
Just to make sure that everyone's clear about it, and I'll certainly get to your, to answer your question. The typical situation is for every precinct, you would have five election judges for the primary election and the general election. The statute allows for us to have three during the primary. That's just what it says. I don't know the, the whole history behind it, but you can have three during the primary. And so what we've looked at as far as the numbers and what we anticipate is going to happen during the primary, there's typically the union, maybe here at Brookins, Love Corner, maybe Meadowbrook Church. There's only certain places that have lines of people and lots of people who are turning out to vote and where the extra judges would be beneficial. The other places, some of them, the turnout or the number of people who come to vote, it, it barely requires two judges, let alone five. So we were going with the minimum of three. So the places, it was basically every place in the county except for those places that were having really high turnout that we know from his, from the history of the elections where we could anticipate longer lines and more people. So like I said, Union, The Ark, Love Corner, Meadowbrook, maybe even Mohammed, depending at, for the consolidated and Mohammed at the Elks Pavilion. So those are the places that we would be looking at to have five judges. Every place else would have three.
And it's my understanding correct that at the general, there has to be five still?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. And then also, is there, are you having any trouble getting judges? I mean, is that kind of the idea behind this as well? And what kind of cost savings are we talking on this?
So I wouldn't say that we're having trouble getting judges, but we are re, sort of revamping the changes, revamping the, the training. And so we are trying to reach out to more people. A lot of our election judges have been serving for a long, long time and bless their hearts, they do the best that they possibly can. But there are some things that are changing with technology and stuff like this, so we're really trying to expand the pool. And right now, we, I think we have somewhere around four hundred judges that have signed up and we need somewhere around three fifty for this primary election. So we feel good about where we are right now and we're continuing to recruit. As far as cost savings, you all may be aware that it's two hundred dollars a day for an election judge. When they, after they do their training and they do the whole day, they earned a two hundred dollar stipend. So if you're just looking at, we're saving four hundred dollars times, almost times ninety, you know?
Okay. And, and you're not concerned about any lines out with cutting this down by this two?
No, we're going to be very diligent and look very thoroughly at any of the locations that we even think might have long lines and make sure that we have the five judges in those locations, for sure.
Is there such a thing as if, say, there's, just say, somebody gets slammed, that you could pull an election judge from somewhere else?
Absolutely. We will have, whatever, if we have extra judges in some locations, we also have judges who are alternates or who are basically on hold or on reserve for us to, to be able to call, to send out. And we can also send staff out if necessary to those locations.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else? Rector.
Have the polling places all been set for the March primary? And are there any changes from last year? Oh, boy, Mr. Rector, are you, you trying to be an attorney tonight? No, I'm just doing, I'm just doing my due diligence. People ask, people ask me the question. So no, Mr. Rector, I have not sent to the county board the full list of polling locations for you all to approve them, if that's what you're asking me. It was a nice try though, but go ahead. All right.
I, I don't know the answer to this. So when is that supposed to be done by? Is that late? Or, or are you still within statute?
No, so I'm still within the statute, but it will be coming to you all because we were looking at, there's a lot of different things moving around in the office with all of the election equipment and all the things that we have going on with training and the new software. So right now, what we're trying to do is get those things in place. And we were still ironing out a couple of locations. And we've just finished that process for all the early voting locations and the polling locations because we had a few of them that changed. So you'll be getting that probably in February.
Okay. Well, so since you brought it up, I'll ask, what's your confidence level for the new software and, and all that for the, the primary?
I'm ecstatic about the, the new software and the new hardware that we have. The Platinum Company that we went with for the software changes, the voter program. We're in the office yesterday and they're working on internal stuff today. And then the vendor that we chose, E S and S, will be in the office tomorrow and we'll be working on the completion and building of the ballot. So I'm very confident in what we have right now and in the staff. Thank you.
Any more questions for Ms. Ammons? Jody.
I just have a quick one. If we do this, this year, for the primaries this year, if we see that there's a problem anywhere, then can we, we can go back to adding more?
Absolutely. The, what, the request, I believe it was worded so that I could use three. Not that I shall, but that I may, that I could. And so if there was any concern, we can definitely get other people, get other judges out there.
Okay, perfect.
Clement.
I just want to throw this in there and I'm not trying to be a pain, but could we put some wording in this for, that this is just for the primary for the twenty-twenty? Just, just for the simple fact, if something changes down the road, that, I mean, I hate to make you bring this back to us every year, but I think it would be better if we just had it for this primary because, I don't know, I just.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
Anybody else for Mr. Ammons white here? Stephanie?
Yeah. All right, I'll, I'll second his amendment.
Stephanie? That, that's it? Okay. Anybody else for Ms. Ammons? Okay. Thank you, County Ammon. Thank you all. So we got to vote. All in favor by saying aye? Aye. Any nay?
You're voting on the amendment first.
Oh, what, what amendment? Oh, okay. So I guess we voted on the amendment. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Amendment passed. Okay, now we're going back voting on the primary election judge change. Judges. All in favor by saying aye? Aye. Any nay? It passed. Okay, C of the Business, number one resignation of the county treasurer, information only. This part I'm going to turn over to Chair Rosales.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Charles. I had asked for this time on the agenda so that I could put out the information because, one, there's a lot of misinformation. And two, I basically wanted to make sure that everybody had the correct information beginning January fourteenth. On January third, we were caught off guard that Laura Pressing, our treasurer, basically had submitted her resignation to myself and, and the executive that she would be resigning, she's still in the office, until January thirty-first. All the decisions will be made for her, will be made by her all in January. She will be signing all the documents in January. We have nothing to do with her office as of January, from now to January thirty-first. So what I wanted to do is, was make up a public announcement that disposition is available and that I am accepting applications for disposition. A letter of interest of why you seek that office and why makes, what makes you qualified, and a copy of your resume to be submitted to me here at the county office. And you could also submit it via email to me as well. I have put together my finance committee and I sort of co-opted them to volunteer and solicit and assist me because we're all together in this. It's not just my appointment. It is basically a county appointment that we're all buying into this idea of selecting the best qualified individual for that office. So I have enlisted the, the services of our vice chair, Stephanie Furtado, a Democrat. I have enlisted the, the chair, which is a Republican, Jim Goss. I have enlisted the services of Diane Klopul so that there would not be a discussion as to who appoints. And also Tammy Ogden, that actually does their financial reports to our board and basically interprets everything that comes out of that treasurer's office to us. So those will be the four people, including myself, that would assist me to go through these applications or go through these resumes and select the most qualified individual for that office. Now, by statute, it indicates that three days upon. Now, by statute, it indicates that three days upon the vacancy of that office, that vacancy occurs February 1, that I have to make an announcement to both political parties. That this vac, this is, there's a vacancy in the treasurer's office. This is a countywide office, so anybody could make recommendations. But the statute also indicates that if it's a Democrat going out, there has to be a Democrat going in. So for those Democrats that were a little nervous about me appointing a Republican accountant, that's not correct. I have to appoint by statute, a Democratic accountant. But he has to be first qualified, he has to be an accountant, he has to be somebody that deals with finances and party second. Not party first, and then get people that are not totally qualified to run that office so that we could be faced with another basically resignation. So the, the position opens up today, there is a job description on your desk and there's also a applicant, employment applicant, application process that's going to go out. The applications will be fully consideration till January 31st. We will still accept applicants after January 31st, but the full consideration will be January 31st because we want to be able to work the process in and select the individual and not waste any time because there's a lot of stuff that needs to be processed and a lot of new software that the staff needs to basically learn on and be trained on. So that is what's out there now. That's what I put in the media. I will be working with Chairman, Democratic Chair Mariam Arahim to make sure that our selection that comes out of this search committee is a qualified individual and that it is a Democrat and it has voted in the last five elections as a Democrat. I'll entertain any questions at this time. Kyle?
Do, do you have a goal for a deadline for the appointment?
The goal would actually be February 1, when she vacates it. I can't put somebody in there any earlier. February 1.
Okay, you said the application deadline was the 31st?
31st, which is full consideration.
Okay, and the goal would be to appoint the next, did you say the?
As soon as possible. On the piece of paper that you have that says Champagne County RPC, it has until the position is filled. But for full consideration, I sort of have to, sort of put a stop and the stop is basically January 31st. There'll be tricklers coming in, but full consideration will be January 31st, which is her first day, last day of employment here with the county. But I cannot do anything prior to January 31st.
Okay.
But we could start the process now.
Okay. And also, will we have to have a special county board meeting to appoint?
No, we just basically do as we've done other appointments. I'll go ahead and make my final decision and selection at our next cow meeting or county board meeting, depending which one falls first. We have two cows, one in basically February and one in March. And we have two board meetings, one in basically February and one in March. I hope that it's not the March appointment because I have been pressured that there's a lot of stuff happening in that office and that we need to put somebody immediately in that office that we're shooting actually to put somebody there in January and we can't do that until she vacates that office.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any more question for Chair Rosales?
John.
Done. So I, I just want to understand this. So the way it's determined that they are a Democrat is they have, is it a qualification they have to vote in the five prior elections? Is that what you said? I'm just, I?
How do you? A lot of people say, well, I'm a card carrying Democrat. I don't know what that means. We, we have no cards. I would imagine, basically, yeah, you know, Democrat from last election? I don't know how that is determined. There's a lot of people that cross over party lines. Usually that is determined by the primary, not by the general election. The general election, you could vote, you know, either party, but by the primary election. But this, this will take place before the primary on March 17th.
Right. I just thought you said something about they had to voted five times or did I misunderstand? That's what I was trying to?
I, that's just off the top of my head.
You're saying you want to see it, a trend that they, they are a D?
That's, that's not my job to determine. It would be the, the chair of the county Democrat Party that would determine how solid that Democrat is. Is it a, you know, I, I know that when we do walk lists and we do lists, they're, they categorize, you know, Democrat A, Democrat B, Democrat C. What does that mean? At all elections, you voted at every election as a Democrat. B, you might have missed one either primary or you might have missed general election. And C, you might have voted Republican at one time and then now you're voting Democrat. Or you split your ticket and you vote both ways. On a regular election, we don't know how you vote, but on a primary, at least you have to declare a party.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if I was clear as mud, right?
I think Jody was next, then James. Oh, okay. So Jody, then James, Tansley.
I don't know if this is even possible. If you find a candidate that's qualified right away and I know they can't start till February 1st, is there a way that they could be like, like abreast on the situations and start training or something? Because we are, it is an utter emergency and like, I'd said, I mean, there's so much that's wrong and needs to be corrected that we need to get started right away. So is there a possibility that they could at least come in and start looking or no? They don't walk into the office till February 1st?
I had made that recommendation, but they indicated to me that there's some training involved. And if we put in a consultant to start working with the records of that office now, because I was saying, well, you know, if we have 60 days, let's use up the 60 days and spread the pool. You know, searches are usually done for, for four weeks, not just two weeks. So basically, the, what would happen is that, uh, that person would only serve two, three, two months, well, three months, January, February, March. But by the time we got that, that person up and running and trained to sign documents, I would be doing another appointment. So they said, no, it's not good to do that at this time. But Laura has, while she's in office, she has opened up the deputy treasurer's position and that's available and that was posted, I believe it was posted Monday. To my dismay, because I believe that, you know, we should not open that position up yet until we get a treasurer and then that treasurer hires their own staff. That's the way I see it. But right now, you know, she will be seating a deputy treasurer in her office before she leaves.
James Tansley?
I'm, I'm just trying to make sense. I'm trying to make it make sense, I guess. And, I don't know, I feel like I, like I gotta say this. Okay, so like, whoever you appoint, right? They term going till November of this year?
Ri- right.
That's right?
Yeah, because it's too late to file a petition for the November 2nd election. So they're going to be have, they're going to have to be slated by the Champagne County Democrat Chair.
Right.
For that election.
And this would be, like, they gotta be slated by the Democratic Party, right?
They would be slated by the Democrat, but Republicans could also slate. They have the ability to slate somebody for that position.
To run against that person appointed, right?
In November, right. I can't stop that.
No, you can't. But you would, I guess, take consideration from them to decide who they're going to?
That's what the statute says. Statute says I have to make an announcement to both political parties.
Yeah.
It's got to be fair.
Yeah, you made the announcement, but you also made the announcement that you formed like a committee.
The committee is comprised of Stephanie and Jim Goss. If Jim Goss recommends me a good Democrat that's qualified, yeah, I will accept his recommendation.
Would that be, what if he's also recommend, recommending to the Republican Party a treasurer as well?
I don't understand.
What I'm saying is, if he's recommending to you a treasurer, that's a Democrat.
Anybody could recommend treasurers to?
True.
I got a stack now that people have applied.
You, you see, you see, I'm getting. If he's recommending to you a Democratic treasurer and he could be potentially recommending to the Republican Party, a Republican treasurer, do I got to finish it?
What was that?
Do I got to finish what I'm saying?
What was your question? What was your question?
Okay, all right. I saw what you're saying. Like, if you, if you taking consideration for this position from a Republican who could possibly be given consideration to the Republican, to Republican Party for a county treasurer, which, which consideration has more substance?
Oh, that's, that's to be determined by the committee.
Okay.
And I, I wouldn't know who's recommending who. It's just an application that comes in.
You kind of wouldn't.
It's just a resume that comes in, it's just a cover letter that comes in. I don't, I don't ask for party affiliation until I speak with Mariam at, at the headquarters.
Okay, that's, that's not anyone I'm against. Okay.
So I'm going to take one more and then that'll be it. Esri?
I just want to say, I want to see a qualified person. Democrat, Rep, I mean, after the November election, Democrat, Republican, Independent, somebody who's qualified and I do the appointment, someone that's willing to come in, they're going to have to hit the ground running. They have to. That's, someone just, we need someone to step up to the plate and do it. And I don't envy them, whoever it may be, because it is not going to be a fun job getting this straightened out. I think it's just, I'm going to go ahead and say this, it's just sad when Ms. Pressing is quoted in the paper saying it's not a crisis. Because it is.
Okay, thank you, yes, sir. Okay, thank you Chair Rosales for the information. Pretty, very detailed, appreciate that. Let's move on to D, Chair Report. All these vacant appointments are information only. So you can read those on your own. And moving now to D, item on a consent, consent agenda zero, right? None? Is that correct?
I have seven.
You have seven?
Seven A2, seven A3B, and seven B4, but I welcome input from anybody. I'm sorry?
A2 was not unanimous.
Yes, it was. That was the new engineered position.
It was a?
Oh, I'm sorry. That one wouldn't go to consent. It just goes forward to the finance committee. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So there's zero?
So seven A3B and seven B4? Thank you.
Okay, there we go. I turn it back over to you, Chair Rosales.
Great. Thank you for the report, Dr. Charles Young. Okay, item eight, Justice and Social Services. Kyle Patterson?
Thanks. We have our monthly reports for probation, court services, public defender, emergency management, so agency, Veterans Assistance Commission. These are all available on the county's website. We also have this month of Rose Grant's reentry financial report for October of 2019. Does anybody have any questions about any of that stuff? All right. So there's no other business, but for the Chair's report, I just wanted to announce that the, uh, the sheriff has hired, he has filled the position of the data analyst. That was the position that we funded based on the recommendations of the racial justice task force. It was an internal hire. The individual is also bilingual, which I'm sure could have many advantages to it. Yeah, that's all I got for Chair's report. If there's no questions or comments, I'm going to pass it on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Patterson. Next, Finance, number nine. That will be done by Dr. Stephanie Furtado. And I did receive a call from Jim Goss that he was not going to be attending today's meeting due to other family concerns and businesses. So Stephanie?
I would like it on the record that Mr. Goss is not here. He made me do this on a day where it goes to three pages and I will remember that. Item A1, Budget Amendment 1900065, Fund 080, General Corporate Department, 036, Public Defender, increased appropriations, $88,888, which I really like. Increased revenue, $1,608. Reason 08036511-02. The state's COLA increase effective 7/2019 created an annual salary increase of $3,216, $1,608 of which was needed for July through December. Fund 0080036511.03 increases needed due to vacation payouts. Do I have a motion? Esri, seconded by Mr. Summers. Discussion?
And Stephanie, I'm not, you've seen me make blunders in E-Lux. You misspoke. You said 88,000. I'm just.
Oh, I'm sorry. 8,888, yeah.
Especially maybe for people online or something.
8,888, yeah. Sorry about that.
Again, not trying to nitpick or?
You're fine. I'm out of, I'm out of.
You've seen me make mistakes in E-Lux, so I'm just wanting to clarify.
I'm out of prayer.
Any other discussions? Again, most of this is driven by required state COLA. All those in favor?
Aye.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry about that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, next one. Budget Amendment?
Budget Amendment 19-00067, Fund 080, General Corporate Department, 020, Auditor. Increased appropriations, $28,348. Increased revenue, zero. Reason, long-term employee retired and compensation was required for her accumulated benefit time. There was also a training overlap of her retirement with the new employee. The auditor provided a memo and is here. If there's any questions, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Clemmons, second, Mr. Patterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Budget Amendment 19-00068, Fund 080, General Corporate Department, 041, State's Attorney. Increased appropriations, $8,000. Increased revenue, zero. Reason, an increase in spending authority to pay for expert witnesses. Do I have a motion? Mr. Patterson, second, Mr. Esri. I will note that the, that the State's Attorney did mention that she does have 4,200 left in her personnel account. So the actual general fund impact is $3,200. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Budget Amendment 20-00004, Fund 080, General Corporate Department, 012, Tornado Sirens. Increased appropriations, $3,440. Increased revenue, $0. Reason, upgrades are not completed in fiscal year 2019 as originally planned. Remaining work will be done in fiscal year 2020. The revenue reimbursement has been received and was posted fiscal year 2019. However, appropriation for fiscal year 2020 is required to pay for the remaining work to be completed. We've heard about these sirens a few times in this body. Do I have a motion? Ms. Taylor, second, Mr. Summers. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Budget Amendment 19-00069, Fund 080, General Corporate Department, 026, County Treasurer. Increased appropriations, $13,485. Increased revenue, $0. Reason, hire temporary staff to fill in for the chief deputy treasurer. Do I have a motion? Mr. Summers, second by Mr. Store. Discussion?
Yes. There is a memo on your desk that Laura drafted and it has her letterhead with an explanation of that budget amendment, which is number five, and a breakdown of some of the interests for the major funds. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, could we have hands? All those in favor? Opposed? So it failed? Okay. Budget Amendment 19-00062, oh, I'm sorry, one up. Budget Amendment 19-00070, Fund 619, Tax Sale Automation Fund, Department 026, County Treasurer. Increased appropriations, $11,811. Increased revenue, $0. Reason, hired experienced temporary staff to assist with property tax billing and collections. Do I have a motion? Mr. Patterson, second?
Second.
Mr. Rosales? Any discussion? Yes.
I know this is a moot point and I'm beating the same drum that we've been beating for the last year, but if we take those two budget amendments plus the 15,000 that we paid the auditing firm, totals of 40,000, that could have hired a full-time bookkeeper for the whole year of 2019 and we might not have been in this mess that we're in now and that's why I'm voting no.
Ms. Rosales?
There's an additional memo on your desk and this one is from our Darlene Klopel, which is basically a breakdown of the expenditures for that auditor that came in to audit the treasurer's office. It's, it's a little bit more finer detail than. Uh, it's, it's in a little bit more finer detail than you have seen, so just for FYI only.
Thank you. I'm not sure that that is germane to this particular, but thank you. I, I do, I will say that if we do vote yes on this, my understanding is that the, uh, automation fund will be fairly low, below five thousand dollars. Just so you know that. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Uh, let's raise hands just from the jump. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ten ye, so that one, all right, that one passed. Okay.
One, one second, Stephanie. Item number five, fail by what, one vote?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I had asked Tammy Ogden that there was a likelihood that this one might fail. And I'm strongly against it. But in that fact that this money was already paid out, this is just a transfer from one account to another account. So I would like to take back my vote and vote for yes on that. Could I do that?
Point of order, if you voted no, you can do a motion to reconsider that vote.
Okay.
I'm gonna be perfectly blunt. I have no idea what the rules are in a situation like this, so... What, I could what? So I could re, I could re, recon, all right. Do I, do I have to take a motion to reconsider the vote? Do I have a motion to reconsider number five, Budget Amendment nineteen dash zero zero six nine?
I move to reconsider.
Second. Discussion?
Roll call, please.
Okay, roll call. Um, I'll just read it into the record, just Budget Amendment nineteen da- uh, dash zero zero six nine, Fund zero eight zero, General Corporate Department, zero two six, County Treasurer.
Patterson?
Yes.
Rector?
No.
Store? Summers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Clemmons?
No.
Clifford?
No.
Coort? Dillard Myers?
Yes.
Eisenman?
No.
Esri?
No.
Furtado?
Yes.
Harper?
No.
Rosales?
Uh, yes. And thank you for your reconsideration, Stephanie, for allowing that vote to go through.
Um, moving on with the agenda, Budget Amendment...
Point of order, we just, we just voted on a motion to reconsider. We didn't vote on the actual motion.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that, I apologize. Okay, so now...
Uh, hearing, Budget Amendment nineteen dash zero zero six nine, uh, Fund zero eight zero, General Corps, Department, two thousand and, uh, zero two six, County Treasurer. Do I have a motion for that? Uh, Mr. Pa- uh, Summers, second, and Mr. Store?
Uh, discussion?
Show of hands, all those in favor? Okay, got that? Do, I'm sorry, did you get it? All right, all those in favor, raise your hands high. Okay. Opposed? Same sign. Okay, we got that? Okay, motion passed. See, I'm a little bit rusty, and this is what y'all do to me. Budget Amendment nineteen dash zero 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 six two, Fund zero eight zero, General Corporate Department, zero three one, Circuit Court, Increase Appropriations, thirty-one thousand, one hundred dollars. Increase Revenue, zero dollars. Reason, amendment needed to cover unexpected expenditures. Do I have a motion? Ms., uh, Mr. Esri, second by Ms. Taylor. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Esri?
I don't know, maybe Tammy, this might be best to answer this. Seems like we maybe did kind of these last year, too. These types of, for the court services and such. Do we need to start budgeting more? I mean, I realize you don't know what kind of cases you're gonna get, so it's hard to necessarily know, and, but I'm, I'm just asking, do you think we need to start? Or, or Darlene, I don't care who wants, I was just, do we maybe need to start looking at budgeting more for this to begin with?
I think we did slightly increase this budget, um, for two thousand and nineteen. And I don't know, I can't remember for two thousand and twenty. But Judge Stefanis and also Lurie Hansen are here as well, if they have, um, additional comments regarding that. And I believe we did do a budget amendment at the end of the year last year as well.
I don't know unless they really want to speak. I, I was just wondering if you've... I guess that's maybe just back in my mind, like I say, I think we did it last year, maybe. I don't know, maybe we still aren't quite budgeting enough. That, that's just a thought at least that passes in my mind, that's all. Thanks.
We can look at that when we work on the two thousand and twenty-one budget.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Mr. Esri as we look in the... It seems like every year we have to come back for inter- especially interpretation services and expert witnesses. And I do appreciate that we try to budget as close to the bone as possible. Um, I will also say, I appreciate the thoroughness of the memo. And I wanted to mention, in case it was confusing, that memo, um, um, is in reference to both, uh, point seven and point eight. So the bottom of the memo actually references the next, the next item on the agenda.
If, if we budget additional money, uh, do we get it back if it's not used?
Well, yeah, I mean, any... Tammy, do you want to explain what happened? Any money that isn't used in the budget, just...
But my, my, I, I, I'm sure it would be put to good use. I, 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 I have no reservations about that. But I, uh, I, I... It, I, 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 I'm not unhappy with providing additional money when it's needed.
Any unspent appropriations for the general fund would go back to the fund balance?
Okay. Any other discussion on that item? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Budget Amendment nineteen dash zero 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 six four, Fund zero nine two, Law, Law Library, Department, zero seven four, Law, Law Library, Increase Appropriations, five thousand, Increase Revenue, um, zero dollars, requesting a transfer of funds from fund balance to cover invoices. Do I have a motion? Mr. Clifford, second. Uh, Ms. Coort? And discussion?
As I, as I said, it's in, it's in the memo on page thirty-three. So if you want to go there. BA, uh, is for Law, uh, Law Library expenditures. It is always difficult to predict which amended laws will result in the publications of new volumes of compiled statutes. And so they had to purchase more, um, things than they thought they were going to have to based on the, um, some of the changes in the law. And, um, there was also some increase in subscription services, which they can't control. So it's on the bottom of page thirty-three and thirty-four. Yeah, I know that was a little confusing, because the, the one memo went for two points. Any, any, but it was a very thorough memo, and I appreciate that. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Budget Transfer nineteen dash zero 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 one five, Fund zero nine three, Foreclosure, uh, Mediation Fund, Department, uh, zero three one, Circuit Court, uh, Court, Total Amount, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Reason, transferring funds due to the closing of more cases than originally anticipated. Do I have a motion? Mr. Summers, second, Mr. Patterson? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And the last budget transfers, nineteen dash zero zero four one four, Fund zero eight three, County Highway Department, zero six zero, Highway, Total Amount, forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Reason, uh, transfer needed for additional fuel expense for hauling material for fiscal year tw- uh, twenty. Additional funds needed for equipment maintenance. We, we have staff here if you want to ask any questions. Do I have a motion? Mr. Clemmons, uh, second, Mr. Clifford? Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Uh, the auditor's monthly reports have been posted, and I looked, um, not only the November ones, but I believe also the December reports are posted. County Financial Update Information Only. Any discussion on that? Highway Department, Structural Engineer Position. So we're gonna do our half of what we voted on earlier, the financial half. Approval of the creation of a new position titled Structure Engineer and Classification of the New Position in Grade Range L. Do I have a motion? Mr. Patterson, sorry, I believe that was literally the entire board moved that thing. Sorry, I saw Mr. Patterson first, and I saw Mr. Store second, so we're just gonna go with that. Sorry about that. Any discussion? I just want to commend you for doing this. I think it's, it's good practice in a, in a, um, I, I think in the long run it's gonna save us money, and I, I think this is a good move on your part, so thank you for this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Budget Amendment twenty dash zero 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 one, Fund zero eight five, County Motor, Motor Fuel Tax Department, zero six zero, Highway, Increase Appropriations, ninety thousand. Increase Revenue, zero dollars. Reason, increase in engineering expense for Structural Engineer Position, Classified in grade, grade range L. Twenty-twenty wa- wage range of seventy thousand, thirty-three dollars and sixty cents to one hundred and five thousand dollar, uh, sixty dollars and eighty cents. Do I have a motion? Mr. Rector, second it, but my, by Ms. Um, Coort? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Budget Amendment twenty dash, uh, Budget Amendment twenty dash zero 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 two, Fund zero eight three, County Highway Department, zero six zero, Highway, Increase Appropriations, ninety thousand. Increase Revenue, ninety thousand. Reason, increase for creation of Structural Engineer Position, Classified in grade range L. Twenty-twenty wage range of seventy thousand, thirty-three dollars and sixty cents to one hundred and five thousand, sixty dollars and eighty cents. Do I have a motion? Ms. Coort, second by Mr. Clemmons? Uh, discussion?
I'm just gonna ask Jeff, I'm, if, if, assuming this passed and it's the previous one passed, how quick are you looking to actually have this filled? That, that's my simple question, or hoping to maybe have it filled.
As soon as I get approval from the board, we'll advertise and hopefully have somebody within a few weeks after that. Yep.
Mr. Clemmons, did you have a question?
I just want to thank Jeff for sticking around.
Yeah.
Because we really didn't need to bother you tonight.
I'll, 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 uh, amplify Mr. Clemmons.
I think it's abundantly clear that the Highway Department is the popular department this evening. Everybody's, uh, wants to be on board with that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The next one, I, I guess I need some clarification on. Is this actually a vote that we're expecting to take today? Okay. Douglas County... Um, okay, so Douglas County Enterprise Zone Participation Proposal, Ordinance Establishing the Enterprise Zone. Uh, do I have a motion? Okay. Mr. Esri?
Question first, are we having a presentation first? Or are we gonna, or should be, is it more proper to do the, make the motion first? Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay. So, motion by Mr. Esri, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Taylor? Seconded. Discussion?
So, uh, the folks that are interested in having you approve this are here this evening. If you would, the whole contingent, actually. If you're interested in having them come up and talk and have a discussion with you.
Yes, please come up.
I can try it, I just don't know if I want to be brave. If I want to put up a map, can I go ahead and do this on this, or? You want us to go ahead, or I didn't know if you want? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, he's very good. Very good. Vice Chairman Furtado, members of the county board. My name is Pat Fitzgerald. I'm an attorney with the local law firm of Meyer Capel. Here this evening before you on behalf of Beewa, who is the pro- proposed developer of the Prairie Solar, uh, solar farm near Sydney. With me is Mr. Brian Moody. Uh, Brian's the Executive Director of the Tuscola Chamber in Economic Development. And he is appearing before you on behalf of the Douglas County, uh, Enterprise Zone. Just a point of clarification, w- we do not need a formal binding vote this evening. What we're asking for is advisory only. Uh, we will come back to you for a formal vote, uh, if that's appropriate. And alternatively, if advisory, uh, you tell us to go get lost, we'll go get lost. But, uh, in any event, what we want to talk with you about tonight is enterprise zones. And Champaign County has three such entities. They're authorized by the state of Illinois. And the city of Champaign and Champaign County have an enterprise zone. The city of Urbana and Cham- and Champaign County have an enterprise zone. And Rantoul has an enterprise zone. The common characteristic of all three enterprise zones is they're urban in nature. We approached each one of those enterprise zones to determine whether or not they would be receptive to potentially extending down to the Prairie Solar, uh, solar farm. All three declined because enterprise zones are limited in size by state statute. At most, they can only be fifteen square miles. None of the urban enterprise zones wanted to burn any of their enterprise zone capacity going out to a rural area like Sydney. Well, that creates a problem. It creates a problem not only for Beewa, but it creates a problem for Champaign County. Enterprise zones are a very important economic tool in your economic development toolbox. With the good news of Cronus that was in the paper today talking about that, that massive development in Douglas County, taking steps to become reality, you begin to look at, how does Southern Champaign County stand to benefit from that going forward? If the three exist... If the three existing enterprise zones don't have interest in extending to Southern Champaign County, how does Southern Champaign County and those property owners take advantage of the Illinois Enterprise Zone? That's where Mr. Moody and the Douglas County Enterprise Zone come in. Brian's going to speak with you shortly about what they're interested in, but let me take a moment and share with you why this is important to Baywa. I appeared before you approximately a year ago, starting to talk about seeking the approval for the Prairie Solar Development. We were fortunate enough that you granted us the approval, and we're proceeding to try to make Prairie Solar become a reality. The challenge that we have is what we sell is a commodity. It's power. And if you have gas station X that sells gas for $2 a gallon, and you have gas station Y that sells gas for $5 a gallon, where are you going to buy gas? You're probably going to buy gas at the gas station that charges you $2 a gallon. Well, in the renewable energy world, every wind farm in Illinois enjoys the benefit of an exemption from sales tax on building materials. Their costs for their power can be lower. Solar development is relatively new, but every solar development that we are aware of is also seeking enterprise zone sales tax exemption benefits, with the ancillary benefit being they can charge less for their solar energy. What we are interested in doing is trying to take advantage of the state sales tax benefit that allows for an exemption on building materials. There has evidently been some question as to what impact, if any, that would have on the county's ability to collect sales tax. There apparently are views that are contrary to each other. Baywa has a consultant in the audience this evening that's reviewed this and determined what she feels is the applicable sales tax impact to the county. Mr. Moody, who has no direct relationship with Baywa, has reviewed this on behalf of Tuscola and Douglas County. He has come up with the same conclusion as Ms. Bergren. Evidently, there is someone at the county level here in Champaign who has reviewed this and has come up with a different conclusion. All Baywa is interested in is doing what's right, and to that end, we are more than happy, Vice Chairman Fratato, if you can direct us who we should work with at Champaign County. But this is not terribly difficult. This is sitting down with the Illinois Department of Revenue and working through our interpretation, working through someone at Champaign County's interpretation, and Baywa is very comfortable. Whatever the Illinois Department of Revenue says is the correct interpretation, we're happy to work with that. But more importantly, what Baywa is interested in, what we really want to try to do with this exemption on sales tax on building materials, is sell our power at the least expensive cost possible. Because, as I mentioned, this is very competitive business, so what we are willing to commit to is 100% of any sales tax savings that we would otherwise receive will go directly to reducing the cost of the power. This is not an effort to make Baywa more profitable. This is an effort to make Prairie Solar a reality. Because at the end of the day, if we don't have consumers that buy our power, we're not going to develop this without customers. And so if there's no customers, there's no sales tax, there's no real estate tax. This all is an interesting discussion, but it's not reality. So, to those points, that's Baywa's thinking, but we do want to have an open discussion with you. And to that end, I'd like to yield the mic to Mr. Moody, and he can share with you what Douglas County is trying to do with this. Thank you.
Thank you all, I appreciate the opportunity to be here again. And just to call your mind back to the maps here quickly, just so you have an idea, I just wanted to point out that this is Urbana's Enterprise Zone, what it looks like, to give you some sense. This would be Rantoul's. This is the city of Champaign, Champaign County. And then I'd point you to Douglas County, this is our zone. One thing you might notice is that, one, we don't have very many large metropolitan areas in the middle of Douglas County, so we're a little more spread out, and I think that goes to Pat's point, that our focus was really more rural economic development, and that's what we see opportunities for in Champaign County. But the enterprise zones here are not really positioned to do that. And so, we very much have a regional development kind of attitude, very much believe that we have to encourage not only projects right in our immediate area, but in the regional area around us. Thirty, 35% of the workers in Douglas County commute in on a daily basis. We only have about 7,500 in our local workforce. So, as we have these projects, we're going to be commuting folks in from the surrounding counties. So, as Pat said, power and the low-cost power is one of the things that we have that's an attractive tool as we talk to developers and we work to recruit developers. And we hear so much negatively about Illinois and development opportunities in Illinois, but one of the things we really have going in our favor is low-cost power. And so, here's an opportunity, again, to attract folks in, attract companies in because of that opportunity. And so, we want to do what we can to encourage that and encourage these projects to happen and work with our surrounding counties in order to do that. But as you can see, our zone is meant to reach out into the rural area for a project. Our zone is very much what I would call a hub and spoke. So we have different hubs surrounding these small rural communities and where there are opportunities for development, that's where we have initially placed our zone. But we did it very much with the mindset that we could add and remove properties as needed. The state's approach is to add enterprise zone when you have a project. You have to have a project in order to apply for a boundary zone amendment. So again, here's a perfect opportunity. We see this project in your backyard that we can help with, we're willing to do that. And it's really just a matter of, before we are going to go run this through the various entities in Douglas County, all the communities that are signed on to our designating agreement, we want to get some sense from Champaign County that you're interested in that as well, and that you want to see that happen before we go to that work.
So, thank you, I appreciate that. So really quick, I just wanted to point out a couple of, this was a lot to read, so I just wanted to point out page-wise, a couple of important pages, and then I'll go to Mr. Clemens. So first of all, on page 70 is the Attachment 7, by which is the, sort of the, I want us to recognize that there are two types of taxes that are associated with this. The first is Attachment 7, and that is sort of the tax calculation around sales tax. And so, the issue is, is that with the level of the playing field, the way that purchasing out-of-state things for use in the county, as we've heard about before in here, has changed, right? And it was supposed to go into effect in July, it's now going to go into effect in January. And so, there is some, there is conversation around, how is that change going to impact our collection of state tax? And so, as we said, there's two very different interpretations of that right now, and so I think before we could, in my opinion, before I would be comfortable having a vote on this, is we would need to bring all of those folks together to come, I mean, because we're talking like a $2 million difference of opinion. So it's not a small difference of opinion. The second is, I wanted to point out on page, I'm sorry, going backwards, 65 is their analysis of the property tax side of things. And then I wanted to point out on page 99 is where there is, is within the Douglas Enterprise Zone, an abatement of property taxes that scales back over the years. In my conversations with folks, they're more interested in the sales tax abatement than the property tax abatement. However, I believe we would have to come to a separate agreement between us and the company about that, because if we enter into this enterprise zone, this is the property tax structure abatement, and so they're not asking for this abatement, is my understanding. But we don't have that kind of resolution before the body today.
Vice Chairman, you are absolutely correct. Vice Chairman, you're absolutely correct. Baywa has no interest in seeking any real estate tax abatement. The only, the only benefit of the enterprise zone that Baywa seeks to take advantage of is the exemption on the sales tax on building materials. And to that end, whatever the Illinois Department of Revenue says is the applicable treatment, we're more than happy to comply with. The other thing that I failed to mention that's important is, Baywa only needs to be in the enterprise zone during the period of construction. Because once we've bought the building materials and received the exemption for sales tax, that's the only benefit we're interested in. What that does then is it allows Douglas County to reuse that capacity in their enterprise zone that would otherwise be dedicated to the Baywa development for other future developments.
And the last thing I want to say is, I appreciate Douglas County participating in this process at all, because this is something we couldn't even be having this conversation if Douglas County didn't come to the table. So I just wanted to make sure that we were all sort of on the same pages. And with that, Mr. Clemens?
I just had a very simple question. I mean, what's the incentive for Douglas County to do this? I mean, you're not, I mean, this just seems really strange to me.
That I'm really that good of a neighbor? No, I don't mean to be joking. I'm absolutely serious about that. That's absolutely my approach to economic development. I learned about 15 years ago with a project called Future Gen, that economic development is really not local. That when we were selling Tuscola, and when we were selling Douglas County, we were selling a 150- to 200-mile region of the state. I absolutely believe that. And if we could focus more on that, and really working to find projects that make sense in our area, we could go after them. We do get a direct benefit. The direct benefit is the state allows an enterprise zone to charge a half percentage point towards the building materials for the application. So you can charge a maximum fee. That fee is limited at $50,000, so that is basically what, that would, what comes back to the county. Now, we do have some expenses that go along with that, so that's part of the reason the state allows you to do that. But they do put a, they set a half percentage limit basically on that. One other real quick point, and I appreciate the Vice Chairman's comments. One thing that's unique about our zone, and when we initially put it together, that's often overlooked, the enterprise zone statute actually allows for a 12-square-mile area. If you get a brand-new zone approved, you can have up to 12 square miles. If you get more than four governments cooperating on an application, which we did, and we, again, very unique in the state, I did not see another one in the year that we were qualified, you can pick up an extra three square miles. So we did that very intentionally for exactly this opportunity. Didn't necessarily know it would be in Champaign County, but didn't limit ourselves to that
Just to clarify, the $50,000 fee would be paid by Baywa. That would not be a Champaign County expense.
Other discussion? Ms. Heisman?
Hi there. You mentioned that the only reason for wanting to abate from these, the sales tax, is to pass the savings on to your customer, which, that sounds grandiosa. But I remember during one of the meetings or something, I specifically said, can we guarantee that those customers that are going to receive this electricity are going to be in Champaign County? And I was told no, because once it's on the grid, you can't control who it goes to. So in essence, the 100% savings that you're going to get that would have went to Champaign County or the state of Illinois will be passed on to customers that could live in several other states or different cities. And so truly, it's not really, so while you say it's the 100% of what you save on the taxes isn't going to come back to us. Like, it's not like we're the customers, it's not going to impact Charles Young and me at all. Go ahead.
So, I guess I'd respectfully disagree with you on that point. Part of what you say is accurate. Once the energy goes into the grid, it goes to the end-user. And that end-user may live in Champaign County, they may live in Vermillion County, they may live someplace else.
Is another state accurate?
That could be. But without that customer, we're not going to build this facility. If we don't build this facility, the $740,000 a year in year one of real estate taxes, of which $93,000, $94,000 goes to the county, doesn't happen. So I do think you benefit.
But I guess on my point would be, though, you're taking our natural resource of farmland in the best prime farmland of the county, and so we would just stay as farmland. So I'm just saying to you that if, is Douglas County a better place to build? Like, I'm just saying, like, it just feels like you came to us and we were going to have all of this, and this is one of the problems that people have with wind farms, because you made mention that they've been able to get out of their sales tax. That has upset people around them, is because they were promised something, and then the big corporation came in, and then they didn't end up having to pay all the taxes. And so that's what I'm seeing happen right now, and so it's frustrating to me.
Well, and I appreciate your frustration, but I think if we go back and review the record, we told you that we were going to pay real estate taxes, and this evening, I've told you, we absolutely are not asking for any abatement on real estate taxes. There was an assumption made that the same benefit that wind farms receive in Illinois, solar farms would receive in Illinois. Generally speaking, both are renewable energy, and if the client made an inappropriate leap of judgment that solar farms would be treated the same as wind farms and be exempt from sales tax, then so be it they did. But we never made, that I'm aware of, I know I never made a statement to you, reciting some amount of sales tax that my client was going to pay. So I think sales tax is an issue of first impression, and what we're telling you is, any savings we receive from sales tax exemption on building materials, we will pass through to reduce the energy cost in an effort to try to find enough consumers, enough clients that want to buy the power, that Prairie Solar becomes a reality, and we can become a good corporate citizen in Champaign County, and we can pay $700,000 a year in real estate taxes.
Have you tried to see if you can get customers with paying the sales tax?
Well, we are in the process right now of trying to find customers, and in fact, one of the customers that we really are actively courting is Cronus. And in fact, one of the customers that we really are actively courting is Cronus.
Mr. Esri and Mr. Clemmons?
Yes, thank you. I guess the way I look at the idea of the, just strictly talking about the lower property, or not property, lower cost of electricity going out on the grid. Let's say Cronus, or Prairie Solar gets built, operational, it's fully operational to put out power. It goes onto the grid. Once it goes out on the grid, it's there. They have their buyers lined up. Their buyers could be local. They could be, you know, way in New York City. They charge X dollars per, or cents, whatever, per kilowatt. At, and if they're at a lower price, is ultimately, if they can produce it low enough, now granted, they're going to sell out because they're going to be undercutting other people. And if you think of it, power is a commodity like gasoline. If one station is undercutting everybody else by enough, they're going to base, I mean, it's not quite the same because they have a limited amount of power they can put onto the grid. And once they have sold it, they've sold it. But it ultimately can drive the price of other power down. It's not quite the same as gas because, again, you can keep bringing gas into your station if you're willing to sell it at that price. And you can fill up however many people you can fill up. Whereas the solar, once they've put it out there, they've, they've sold all their production. They can't sell anymore. But if, if you go back to the gas station, they keep selling it low enough. Well, if the other gas stations want to sell any gas, they're going to have to come down, maybe not meet them. But if they were low enough, you know, come down within maybe a few cents or something to try and meet that price. So, that's, that's just me, the way I guess I would look at the lower price of electricity going out on the grid and what it could potentially do. The customers that this project is looking for aren't going to be like the community-based ones. The community-based ones, seems like I remember hearing saying, they would almost be willing to talk to individual houses, individual customers like in St. Joe to sign up to buy for them. Because that is a community-based. And they aren't putting out the megawatts. Is it 200 megawatt or so?
150.
100, I forgot. The 100 megawatt like Baywa Prairie Solar is potentially going to do. With them putting out so much, that's just one of the factors that they aren't going to want to have however many households, individual customers. They're looking for the bigger customers like a Cronus or say a Kraft or whoever else. And that's just the fact of life. And if it could all be in Champaign County, hey, that'd be great. And/or Douglas with Cronus, that'd be great. But they're going to go out there and see who they can, they're going to have to set their price somewhere and go out there and say, okay, we're looking to sell this price, our electricity at this price. Put it out on the market and see how many bites they get. And if they get enough bites at that price, they'll sell it. If they don't and think they can go a little bit lower, they'll lower it. If they, if, no, this is as low as we can go. We don't have enough sold. It's not going to happen. That's, that's just my take on the price of electricity and how it would go out on the grid and would work. I, that's all I've got to say on.
I guess my question would be for you, Mr. Moody. We keep talking about this Cronus plant and just keep hearing about it. And, and I'm the Toledo Township Highway Commissioner as well. And I know there's a rather large water line going to run right through the middle of my township. Not heard a word about it or anything. But I'm sitting here and you guys are tying up a bunch of your enterprise zone to do this. What are you going to do when Cronus comes in and says, we want that in our enterprise zone, that water line? Because we're talking millions of dollars for that water line alone. Okay. But. I understand that right now, but in. Because, I mean, it's going to be literally millions of dollars for them to get that water line down there. Correct. It's not, but in the same respects, I mean, with the same thing with this, with Baywa here. I mean, it's not. You're, well, you're talking 18 miles of water line in Champaign County alone. But if you tie this up here, then you've got, you kind of tied your hands, correct? Okay. Okay. I, I'm just, I'm thinking forward here and I could just see that happening.
Also, sorry about that. Letters have gone out to the right-of-way owners on the water line. Happy to talk to you about that offline because we have just started that back up. We have about 25% of the corridor signed at this point. So, I'm very much in the middle of that project. So, happy to talk to you about that, too.
Mr. Summers?
Before I would be supportive of this, we do need to work out the conflicting information, as Mr. Fitzgerald put it, in terms of sales tax cost to the county. In terms of benefit, though, if this project were to move forward, it would be economically beneficial to Champaign County in terms of the work that the construction would bring. It may not be entirely managed by Champaign County workers, but a significant portion would be. I, too, have heard, we've heard Cronus thrown around for a really long time. But if a low-energy price would spur forward development of Cronus, I'm not sure where you're even at at this point, where Cronus is at this point. I actually kind of not even wanted to think about it for a while. But if there could be some synergy with this between low-energy prices attracting Cronus and, well, for Cronus, the gray water from Champaign County may be a very small piece. That, again, is significant work to folks in, let's just say, east-central Illinois, central Illinois. So, while the energy savings may not be of a great deal of significance to people in our community, these other projects would or could be very significant economically, at least for the portion of time when construction would be done. So, I'd like to get more information about our conflicting information and then have further discussion.
I, Mr. Storey?
Thank you. These are some pretty impressive figures. And I appreciate the, you know, the effort that's gone. I found the proposal a bit difficult to read. It's certainly not like any other proposal that I've looked at. And I, I wonder if we might ask our county executive or some of the staff to verify some of the information that's, that's proposed here. Would anybody willing to speak to that?
I can say that we did check with the county assessor who believes that the numbers provided for the property taxes on the, on the sheet here are correct. They match what she would anticipate them to be. The document in terms of legal review is at the state's attorney's office at this time. I have not heard back from them. We did get the conflicting information about potential sales tax, which I think still needs to be resolved about which way that will go in terms of how much that would cost the county. And do you have other things that you would like us to check on?
I do. I mean, I think that there's, really, for this to go forward, there would need to be three pieces, right? So, there would need to be these two. But then there would be, need to be a third item that we would need to generate or in some way in concert that was reviewed by the state's attorney that specifically made an arrangement on the property tax. Because as the enterprise zone stands for Douglas County, there is that abatement that they're not asking for. So, we would, if, if they're going under that enterprise zone, we as a county would need to come up with a different arrangement, right? Or in some way, shape, or form, that has to be spelled out. And I feel like all three of those votes would need to happen at the same time to go forward. And then, the, the fourth piece that Mr. Summers alluded to, and I don't think that this is the purview of the county. However, I strongly encourage the project to do this is to come to some sort of formalized agreement in terms of labor with the entities that, like, so with the laborers and with the electricians. So, that would not be something that we have any legal authority over. But I would strongly encourage that, I know, I believe IBW 601's, you know, authority area includes half of Douglas County. I'm not sure about the laborers. But so, that, there is some advantage to that, too. But that would be something that would need to be worked out with the company. We really don't have any authority over that. But I think that going forward, that would be something I personally would be very interested in. I think one of the advantages outside of improving our energy grid locally is, is the work, right? And I know that's something that's really important to a lot of the members of this body. So, making sure that that piece, even though we'll never really vote on it, is moving forward. And I know that y'all have been in conversation. I think it's something that's really important.
So, I have a question for Mr. Moody. So, if the county were to join the enterprise zone and Baywa does not ask for the property tax abatements, but we would still be in the enterprise zone for future projects, that's written into the enterprise zone? So, is that just that project by project gets decided by the partners? Or how does that happen?
It has to be voted upon by the advisory board. So, the advisory board, the advisory board has to prove that. There has to be an application to them. In our discussions about Baywa, property tax was not one of, one of the things that we discussed as, as being considered. So, the advisory board hasn't taken a position on it other than not, they're, they're not assuming that question is coming to them. There's a, we have two definitions, retail projects and then we have manufacturing, light office that qualifies for the larger abatement percentage. So, again, that would be, there'd be an application from the project. To me, we take that to the advisory board. They would make, they'd make a determination or recommendation. It's not, this would be up to the advisory board, but it is not specifically spelled out in our rules that solar projects would be, it's, it's manufacturing projects. So, there may be some interpretation that would even have to happen there if they were to ask for the property tax abatement, for instance, so.
Mr. Storey?
Thank you. Does the project have decommissioning costs figured in and perhaps farmland restoration?
Yes. And that's actually, we provide a letter of credit to the county that secures our performance. And that's actually part of the prior approvals that we worked through with the county board. But, but the short answer to your question is yes, there are safeguards for that.
Do you think that, that a future version of this proposal could have something like a table of contents, a summary, a few other, maybe a better organized financial presentation?
We'll, we'll certainly take that under advisement and work to produce a more clear work product.
Mr. Esri, did you want to speak to that at all as chairman of ELO?
Yeah, thanks, Stephanie. I also have another question, if you don't mind. But, yeah, we've already, their approval process, they've already agreed to the letter of credit for decommissioning and all that stuff as set forth in our ordinances. They met him and the county board approved it. So, that's been taken care of. Now, granted, they haven't put the money forward yet because they haven't started the process yet and it's not, it's not built. My other ques, so I guess this discussion about the property tax and hearing Mr. Moody, you and Ms. Club will talk back and forth. So, if, if we would go through with this and we do the enterprise zone, Champaign County would get a one seat correct on the advisory board. They're only asking for it for the two years. This is on the sale, on the sales tax only. But I'm just, would it be possible that they could then ask later on for the property tax? And if they did, if they did, this is just thrown out there. Is that then only at the advisory board level that makes that decision? I mean, the county board then, now granted, if it was one of us on the county board, just saying, whoever was on the advisory board, you know, I'll just say it was me, just say it was me. I could come and get, get the county board's feelings on it. But I'd only be one person on that board. So, then, I'm just wanting to work through my mind and how that would potentially work through.
So, Board Member Esri, Baywa would be more than happy to enter into a binding agreement with the county that we would not ask for a real estate tax abatement. That would be one way to address the issue. And for you folks, just for your benefit, the two people in the back of the room, Ernst Nemeth and Laurel Bergren, they are consultants for Baywa. They work with a company called Arc Perspectives. They're quite frankly, they've forgotten more about solar development than I know. But, but the note that Ernst gave me just addressed the question, to be, to receive enterprise zone benefits, the state of Illinois mandates that you pay prevailing wage. So, okay.
I have, actually have a question. I think, I was very interested now and become kind of really obsessed with enterprise zones. And I've been reading a lot about them. Has there ever been, thank you again to Douglas County, has there ever been a conversation historically? Like, why do we as a county not have an enterprise zone? Have we ever considered it? And I saw in this last sort of round of counties establish, or of establishment of enterprises zones for 2020, I think five or six counties have established enterprise zone, Coles County. And that, I mean, this may be not germane to this conversation. But if, if we wanted to have more control of driving the ship, maybe long-term, that's something we as a body. And I don't know, maybe we've discussed it in the past and just haven't done it. For those of you with more memory, just for memory.
I can't speak for everybody. What I can say is that the county actually does participate in.
We participate.
The other, it's not our enterprise zone, but we participate as a partner in the, in the urban ones. We just potentially haven't had a request.
One other question is, you said that we don't have to take a binding vote this evening. Can you speak a little bit to, to what your timeline is? And also, I understand that Douglas County actually has to hold a meeting to invite us to participate. Like, there has to be a public meeting where you like formally invite us so the public can come and weigh in and have, is, I mean, where's that?
There is, there is a, there's a very detailed process for enterprise zone amendment defined by the state. One of the first steps in that process is you have to have a public hearing, basically, to announce all the parcels that you'd like to add to the zone publicly. So, not quite what you're describing. There's, there, we don't have to formally invite Champaign County that, through that mechanism. But each application for an amendment or a removal requires a public hearing. So, most likely tomorrow morning, it will be me and a court transcriber sitting in a large room and I'll be reading her PIN numbers for about 15 minutes is usually how those go. We don't usually get a whole lot of attendance for those kind of hearings. But it's a required part of the process.
Brian, can you speak, though, to the requests that you're making of the committee of the whole this evening?
So, we're, we have sort of. So, um, we're, we have sort of two, well, we have two applications moving at the same time. Kronos is a little bit out, uh, ahead of BAW and we'd very much like to, to try to get those applications in at the same time. Uh, are very close together. As you may guess with the state of Illinois, when you've kind of got their attention, uh, which, uh, Kronos is very much on their radar screen, um, it's typically a good opportunity to try to get applications in front of them. So that's, that's part of our, uh, fo, our interest in being here tonight is to get some read from you so we can keep this moving. The other issue is we do have to take it in front of these, the ordinance, the designated ordinance, um, in front, uh, in the intergovernmental agreement, in front of all the, uh, bodies that are currently signed on to that agreement. So base, most of the municipalities and the county in Douglas County, um, all each have to independently act on this. So we would want to take it to them all first and then bring it to you finally, because you would be the entity being added on. Um, the Kronos application is out in front, so we will go ahead and do that and, and do that in Douglas County and not have to run that through, um, Champaign County. There's just no need to. Um, but again, our hope would be we can, we can get those two together and, and basically submit them at the same time. I think tonight, like I said, getting, um, whether it's a straw vote or, or how you might want to go about that to just give us some idea if we should continue to work on this. Um, I think the other issue is who exactly, uh, especially the Department of Revenue issue that we want to make sure we get clarified. Um, I think that's probably going to come down to myself, someone from the Department of Revenue and someone from the counties, um, at the table, talking through all that. So how do you want to go about that? I think is one of the questions, uh, I assume the executive is, is maybe the way.
Yeah, I would, I would imagine, yeah, coordinate that with the executive office.
Vice Chairman, a, in any conditions that you would want to attach to the straw vote, even though it's non-binding and it's informal expression of interest only, we'd be very comfortable with. So by way of example, if you wanted to say that BAW would never ask for a real estate tax abatement, that the sales tax exemption question would be answered to your satisfaction. Uh, any of those kind of limitations are okay? We're just looking to see if this is something that the county of Champaign's even willing to entertain.
So as I said, I feel like I'm getting like a Robert Rules of Order crash course here. What am I, can I do that?
You can table the mo, somebody can table the motion, which just takes it off the floor entirely because it won't be readdressed. Um, that's how that works because you're tabling it, you're not. I know when you say that, when the board says the word table, they think that just means we're talking about it later. The actual motion to table means that it goes off the floor. It's, it's, it just, unless somebody brings it up again, it's just off the agenda. Um, and so you can table, you can table this motion and then you can do a straw poll if you'd like to do that.
Okay. So first of all, um, so I shouldn't table it? Well, she's saying I can't take it off the table. Can vote, you can vote to
I second.
Table the motion.
I, I think.
Okay. What, what you, yes, you could ask one more question. Sorry.
Okay, I'm going to ask the question that an average Joe would be thinking. You can tell there, I'm sitting here as a result of not being able to trust a billion dollar corporation and BAW is a company and makes money. It's not a non-for-profit, correct?
Correct.
So BAW is making a substantial amount of money. And so I'm saying, and I'm obviously opposed to it. And so my whole thing would be, can this project proceed with the sale? Like if we don't, we don't let you get out of paying the sales tax? And my thought would be, would BAW be willing to do that? Because you're going to make the money back. You're providing energy that is, people are head over heels for it. They're going to buy it up because they want to be a part of the renewable energy to save global warming and all of that. And so it's going to be sold. And so my, my thing is you're making money on it. And so, and I'm not a fancy lawyer and so I can't debate back and forth with you as elegantly. But so when you say a hundred percent of what you save is going to go to the customers, that sounds great. But again, it might not necessarily, it, it could be two people in Champaign County, but it could be nobody in Champaign County. And so I'm saying to you, as a company, BAW, that makes lots and lots and lots of money, would you be willing to build here even if the sales tax isn't taken away? Microphone.
Thank you. First of all, I think you debate very well. So, but, but in any event, um, I, I appreciate your optimism a, and that, uh, the consumers will pay more for renewable energy. But the reality that we see in the marketplace that we deal in is people want to pay the least amount possible. Our competition in Illinois, renewable energy, uh, for renewable energy, all the wind producers have an exemption on sales tax for their building materials. Um, the solar developers are currently seeking exemptions. So our competition has a very significant cost that they're not paying. A, and we're trying to compete with them. A, and when it comes down to will a consumer pay more for our renewable energy than someone else's renewable energy? Because again, to your point, which, which, uh, I think you were spot on, when the energy gets onto the grid, it can go a lot of different places. So, you know, when we're trying to sell Kronos, our renewable energy, I guarantee you there are other renewable energy providers in the state of Illinois that are also trying to sell Kronos, the renewable energy.
So I guess I was under the impression that whoever is buying from the wind, wind turbines, it's not already sold, like they can.
Well, there, there are, there are many, there are many different, uh, renewable energy developments coming online, uh, every year.
Oh, okay. So really quickly back to, we have a motion to postpone or to table. Um, my question is, would you consider changing that motion, Mr. Tinsley, to a motion to postpone to the full board meeting on January 23rd? I don't remember who seconded it.
I, I did and I, 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 I don't support that. I think that we should have the voters to get it off the table.
No, he's serious, I think. Okay, well, that motion was made and seconded. So now we are discussing the motion to table. Does anybody have any discussion about the motion to table? Yes, sorry Lauren.
I don't, I don't think you can discuss the motion to table. I think it doesn't, doesn't need discussion. I think, it doesn't allow discussion. I think you just vote.
Okay. Sorry Lauren. Um, so all those in favor to table this motion? Say aye if you're in favor. Raise your hands. All those in favor to table the motion? Opposed? All right, I believe the motion is tabled. Okay, so that motion is tabled. Do I have the ability to straw vote?
You can do a straw vote. You can do a different kind of motion, whatever you'd like.
Well, it's, I'm not going to move to ta, we'll move to, um, we're not going to move to take it off the table now. That doesn't make any sense. Um, so we're going to, okay, I would like a straw vote. This is a non-binding straw vote. Do you, do we as a county want to, to continue the conversation? To come to an agreement on the amount of sales tax? And to continue, um, so that we can have an informed conversation for that vote? And to ask our staff to, um, come up with a resolution, a, a binding resolution around, um, permanent exclusion of the property tax abatement? Do you want to continue to have that conversation at the next meeting? If, all those in favor? This is just a straw poll. Okay. So procedurally, what I believe will happen is that somebody would have to vote, um, to put on, to take it off of the table at the next meeting. We would have to have a majority of that and then we could discuss it at the next meeting.
We can just add it as another agenda item at the next meeting if it's a different, disguise, different proposal, different resolution.
Okay. Um, so my understanding is based on pre, so we are now done with that item. The next item is the intergovernmental agreement, which from what you just said is we would not be acting on this until the other agencies acted on it. Is that accurate?
That, that's typically the most ideal we may find as we have this discussion, if we can figure out a way to, to do that. Um, there's a lot of variables with all the other municipalities, so.
Um, so that, I mean, do you all want me to move this? Do I have a motion for this? I mean, this is a separate action item that's on our agenda. So do I have a motion for this? Yeah, it's moved, but I mean, it's a separate action item. So I don't know, do I, do we have to take a vote on it?
You can table, table this one as well.
All right, fine. Moved by Ms. Taylor. Do I have a second? Discussion. Table it, Mr. Rector. Second by Mr. Patterson. All those in favor of tabling it? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much for your time. I think that with that, we have concluded our conversation for today. Very much appreciate, um, your helping us through this conversation. Yes.
Thank, thank you for your time. Just one, one point of order. Who should we speak to on behalf of the county? Okay, great.
County Executive. Okay, thank you.
And the Chair.
Um, next up, we have a conversation, this is for information only, so there's no action item today, about establishing a property assessed clean energy pace program in the county of Champaign designated a pace area providing for property assessments and approving related matters.
Okay, this item is brought to your attention for information only and then we'll probably want to bring it to a vote later. This is a program that's now authorized by the state of Illinois to provide alternative financing for energy efficient either renovation or new construction projects so that people can pull out the parts of the project that are related to that and fund it in a different way that would potentially cost them less money. Um, the, the agreement with the county is necessary because a county must approve that the way that the financing can be done can be paid, that paid back through the tax bill. So basically the county is acting at, not as the financier, there's a, there's a nonprofit, uh, financing company that's set up to do that, but that they're agreeing that they will be the collector of the amounts of money that are owed through the property taxes. It'll be an insert or an addition to the property tax. So the county then would get paid some kind of fee for, um, doing the collections and just, and distributing it back to the finance company. There are two, uh, development projects, one in Champaign and one in, uh, on university property that are interested in taking advantage of this program, which is how it came to our attention because they were wondering if the county had the program yet. Um, and so we just researched it and this is a lot of information to absorb right now. But I'm passing it for your information. Um, there's more information that I can provide, but, um, if people have questions, I'm happy to try to answer them, but there's, we just, I just didn't, I didn't, we haven't researched it enough to be able to tell you more than that at this point. Any further discussion?
Um, I'll just say that I, I know these issues are complicated, but this kind of, these kind of economic development assessments and conversations around them are the kind of things I think that this body should be deliberating on. And I appreciate the level of conversation. Um, folks brought up things, water pipeline I would have never thought of, so I appreciate that. With that, I believe we are other business. I don't have any, chairs report. I don't have any designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda. I have A1, A, I'm sorry, 9A1, A2, A3, A4, A7, A8, A9, A10, C2A, C2B, and C2C. And with that, I'm done.
Well, we have no other business and we, we stand adjourned. What was that? United on the agenda. Go ahead, Charles, you got one more break.
Real quick, real, hold up, real quick. So, um, some of my constituents I talked to, um, Saturday, I met with some of my constituents. They concerned about, do anybody know for sure, are these, um, meetings live, being recorded? Like right now, can someone turn the TV on and watch these, um, meetings? Well, I mean, like what channel? Not YouTube, but I'm talking about, do anybody know? Because some of my constituents complained, they said they do not see. Is there a channel, TV's channel? Get the address. But I'm talking about like TV.
It's not the city of Chi, it's the city of Champaign or do we, do we do, are we live?
So we not live? That's my question, we not live? Live stream but not TV channels, not turning TV cha, gotcha, okay. That's what they wanted to know.
Thank you, Charles. We stand adjourned.